Mrs. Anaya.
On Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, notice of this meeting was mailed to the Press and the Mainland Journal. Notice of this meeting was also delivered that day to the Eck Harbor Township Clerk and posted on a bulletin board in Township Hall.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bonjorno.
Here.
Mr. Dalla Barca.
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Here.
Ms. Hyman.
Here.
Mr. Ireland.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Seppi.
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
And Mrs. Salagi.
Here. Okay, we stand for the flag so please.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, our nation, our land, in the mission for the liberty and justice for all.
Oh, gosh. Yes. Okay, welcome to our April 12th meeting. Tonight's a special night.
Good evening, everyone, and yes, President Salagi, tonight is a very special night. We look forward to this night, to this evening, every year as we honor our Teacher of the Year and our Educational Services Specialist of the Year. And while it's a personal honor and it's very, very special for all the honorees, overall, it is recognition of the efforts of the wonderful teachers and the field of education, particularly in the public school. So I sit here very, very proud of the skills and the passion and pride that our honorees have displayed over the last year to be recognized by their colleagues, and I am very, very grateful, and I think we all are, to be able to say that they are ours. So hashtag EHT Pride, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Charlton, the Director of Human Resources, who put this program together this evening, and President Salagi and I will join him on the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. And yes, this is one of our favorite, I'm not sure what that sign is. This is one of our favorite nights of the year, absolutely, to celebrate, and before we even get started, we have a special guest that's going to join us, so why don't you come in, Mighty? Mighty is always full of EHT spirit now for all the events where we celebrate the great accomplishments of our staff and students. Come on up, and you can help us give out some awards, Mighty. So the reason we're all here tonight is this is what's called the Governor's Educator of the Year, GEOY Program, that combines the traditional Teacher of the Year Award as well as now an Educational Service Professional of the Year Award to celebrate our support staff that are vital to the success of our students and to the education process here at EHT. So what we're going to do after showing you a brief video that kind of shows you all the awards recipients tonight, the principals are going to come up and they're going to speak briefly about each of the two of their honorees. So let's give you an idea of who we're talking about tonight and who we're going to celebrate. Eck Harbor Township School District wishes to congratulate our Educators and Education Service Professionals of the Year. Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Teacher of the Year, Renee Smith. Education Service Professional of the Year, Kristin Anzardo. Davenport Complex. Teacher of the Year, Courtney Miles. Education Service Professional of the Year, Stephanie Cavalier. Miller School. Teacher of the Year, Michelle Chishko. Education Service Professional of the Year, Julie Brusese. Teacher of the Year, Jenny Dilks. Education Service Professional of the Year, Stephanie Sramelli. Alder. Teacher of the Year, James Alton. Education Service Professional of the Year, Kareem Spence. Teacher of the Year, Jason Christeller. Education Service Professional of the Year, Joseph Monax. Congratulations to all recipients. So thank you, yes, another round of applause for all of our recipients. So I'm going to start with the Principal of the Swift Sleigh Ball Complex, Mr. Marinelli is going to come up, and what you're going to see our honorees awarded is President Salagi is going to present the plaque honoring their achievement, Dr. Gruccio is going to present a bouquet of flowers, and I will be giving out their Certificate of Achievement for the Governor's Educator of the Year Program. So Mr. Marinelli, without further ado, get started.
Thank you, Dr. Charlton, and to each and every one of you, congratulations, and thank everybody for coming out this evening, for such a great honor. If I could call up Ms. Renee Smith first. I went around talking to some of the staff members and get some kind of quotes and feedback, what the staff members of the complex kind of felt about Ms. Smith, and she's a very strong and veteran teacher who is always seeking new innovative knowledge to bring to her students. She does a great job differentiating her learning to each and every student's specific needs, and Mrs. Smith is an expert on embracing change and positively embracing the change to do what's best for her students. So the staff thinks wonderful things of you, and so do I, and deep congratulations. Congratulations, Kristin.
Thanks.
I also went around, talked to some people, and the staff of the complex feels very strongly of Ms. Kristin Anzardo. She's a self-motivated and a very passionate speech pathologist. She strives each and every day to make the difference in each student's life and growth. She is always looking at new ways to motivate her students to become better communicators. Everybody thinks very highly of you, and congratulations on everybody's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Marinelli. Next up is the Principal of the Davenport Complex, Mrs. Latia White.
Greetings, everyone, and what a wonderful night to be here to celebrate some awesome staff in the EHT district. I'm going to first call up the Teacher of the Year, Ms. Courtney Miles. So our Teacher of the Year is Courtney Miles, who is a second-grade teacher. She's very instrumental in boosting the morale of our staff and students by way of her role as our Davenport Renaissance Team Member. She, along with the team, have implemented fun, rewarding activities for both the staff and the students, including Staff loyalty of the Month, Student of the Week, EHT Pride Ticket Awards, and the creation of our Davenport Respect the Bus Program. Courtney is a team player and very dedicated to her role as a teacher, ensuring that all students are educated, no matter their academic abilities. She is an active member of the township as a parent and as a member of the EHT Education Foundation. It was noted that Courtney has many qualities that demonstrate leadership and innovation in education activities within and outside of the school setting. She has the respect and admiration of staff, parents, colleagues because of her dedication, and again, thank you so much for educating, embracing, and engaging the students of Davenport and for being an outstanding member of EHT. We are proud to call you our Davenport Teacher of the Year. All right, and I would like to call up Ms. Stephanie Cavalier, who is our Educational Service Professional of the Year. So Stephanie is a member of our liaison team, ensuring that the building needs are met. Every morning, she greets the students with a big smile and a warm welcome as they enter the building. Stephanie is a team player and often creates cross-curricular lessons to bring fun activities to students to experience, such as the Parade of Robots, the meet and greet with her bunny rabbit for the read aloud activity, the book character parade, to name a few. She develops various ways to engage students in reading and to inspire a love for reading. Stephanie is always willing to work with others for the benefit of the students and to assist staff with reading materials to support them in the classroom. We are happy to have you at Davenport School, and as one of your colleagues stated, you're a team player and willing to help anyone who needs it. You go above and beyond for the students of Davenport. Thank you for embracing, engaging, and educating the students and staff of Davenport School. You are deserving of the title. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Next up is the Principal of the Joanne D. Miller School, Mr. Jim Batterby.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the people receiving awards tonight. Also want to take a second to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Gruccio, and Dr. Charlton for taking time tonight to celebrate our great staff. Miller School's Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Michelle Chishko. Chishko is an outstanding teacher, a great role model for our youth, not only in the school but in the community as well. Just a few words from your peers who nominated you. Ms. Chishko is a fourth-grade ELA teacher, and she has been teaching in our districts since 2007. She has demonstrated to our community that she is a caring, creative, and supportive teacher, has a great rapport with her students, and ensures they feel safe, respected, and loved. She is described by our peers as someone that has a positive attitude, makes them feel appreciated, someone to go for for advice, lesson ideas, or just to talk. When Ms. Chishko is not teaching in a classroom, she can be found working in our Aspire Program, coaching cheerleading, lacrosse, and leading our local Girl Scout troop. Great job. Educational Service Professional Year is Mrs. Julie Brusese. Julie is an asset not only to, obviously, the most important thing in our schools is our students, but our staff and our administration as well. Julie has been a counselor at the Miller School for the past 10 years. She has demonstrated to be dedicated, genuine, hardworking, and an advocate for children and families. She truly appreciates the need to build relationships with children and their families in order to affect change academically, socially, or emotionally. She applies a practical approach when providing school counseling services to children, working to facilitate change while encouraging the student and family members to remain accountable. Her ability to think out of the box has proven to be an asset as she continually looks for new and innovative ideas to support staff and students. Julie is a valued member of the school's 504 and INS committees, and she has executed a school-wide career fair, ran a peer mediation program, established a staff-student mentorship program, and coordinated state assessments, among many other duties. Congratulations, Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Batterby. Next is the Principal of Fernwood Middle School, Mr. Kevin Frick.
First of all, congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year and Educational Service Professional of the Year. Thank you to the Board of Education and Dr. Gruccio for hosting tonight. It's always a great evening to be here. The Fernwood Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Jenny Dilks. She's been with us for a few years, but this is the first year she's full-time Fernwood. We used to share her with Alder, so we couldn't be more pleased about that. Jenny wears a lot of hats, as a foreign language teacher, including the Hispanoja Blante's students. She's a bilingual parent coordinator. She does a lot of translation for us, and she's really a leader amongst all the teachers. Real quick story with Jenny is, obviously, translation's a big part of our job, and Jenny's always willing to jump in, sometimes during her lunch, and a lot of times the conversations we have are not always the best, but Jenny is so caring to the parents and the students that she translates for that it becomes almost like a counseling role. So we couldn't be more happier to have Jenny with us. Congratulations, she do a fantastic job every day. And our Educational Service Professional of the Year is Ms. Stephanie Sramelli. Stephanie is one of our Sign Language interpreters. She's very involved with our American Sign Language Club, which has students, staff, administrators involved in that as well. She's always working hard for her students that she translates for. The story I'm going to give you about Stephanie is the day we announced the two winners, Administration Renata, we walk down to the classroom, we bring balloons, we bring flowers, I walk in, I interrupt class, and I give a little speech about Stephanie. The entire time I'm talking about Stephanie, she's signing to her child. That's dedication. Thank you so much for everything you do, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Frick. Next up is the Interim Principal of Alder Middle School, Mrs. Joan Day.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of our recipients. It is my honor to speak about Alder's Teacher of the Year, Mr. Jim Alton, and our Educational Services Professional of the Year, Mr. Kareem Spence. Mr. Alton, would you come up, please? He is certainly a teacher leader in our school. No matter the job, or the committee, or the commitment we've asked of him, Jim is always willing to help. He is an integral part of the INS team. He helped to develop the new science curriculum implemented this past year, and most recently agreed to become a member of our school's safety team. His dedication to the staff and students at Alder is to be commended. Henry Adams once said, "A teacher affects eternity. He can never tell where his influence stops." Thank you, Jim, for being that teacher, the best and most positive influence on our students and staff.
Mr. Spence is Alder's Educational Services Professional of the Year. He is currently an eighth-grade counselor and has been a welcome addition to our counseling team since joining us five years ago. Mr. Spence is committed to supporting our students. Passing his office on any given day, it is bustling with students who come to him with truly anything they need. His colleagues feel the same. Here is what one of them had to say about Mr. Spence. "I'm grateful to be part of a professional community where Kareem has contributed so much, where he has lent unending support to his colleagues and to countless children who have walked through his door with hope in their grasp. He makes me a better teacher each and every day, and I never undervalue the impression his guidance has given me." Congratulations, Mr. Spence, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Day. And last but not least, the Principal of Eck Harbor Township High School, Mrs. Patty Connor.
Good evening, and welcome to everyone, and congratulations to all of you who have received this evening, the awards this evening. It's really an exciting night, and I'm not going to stand here and echo what everyone else has said, because we all love this night, being here for you. So we're going to start off with our Teacher of the Year at the high school, Mr. J.C. Christeller. Will you please come forward? Mr. Christeller is no stranger to EHT. He is an alumni of our high school, and he is a proud member of the Social Studies Department, teaching U.S. History II to all of our students. He's been with us at the high school for nine years. Mr. Christeller is an avid traveler, so when he's traveling around the world, he comes back, he takes his experiences, he wraps them all up, he makes it fit the curriculum, and he makes it come alive, and that's what's so special about what he does. He's a dedicated professional who not only teaches well, but is involved in our school community. He can be seen in the high school auditorium as the producer of our drama events and our plays, as well as at the athletic events, supporting all of our students. His colleagues have said this, "He is a true professional, an awesome human being, and a devoted friend. He is always willing to lend a hand to help students and colleagues any way that he can. He has the kindest heart and a great sense of humor." Thank you, Mr. Christeller, for all that you do. Our Educational Services Professional of the Year is Mr. Joe Mahonix. Joe, will you come up? Yeah. So Joe has worked in the district for the past five years as a paraprofessional. He has a very unique job because he is a one-on-one paraprofessional with an incredible young man who happens to be blind. This child is happy no matter where you see him, and that's thanks to what Joe does for him and with him every single day. It's amazing. I've heard, I've had an opportunity to witness Joe and his interactions with the student, and it's just incredible to watch. The child is so elated and so happy just to be in school and being a part of it. Some of the things that Joe has done, his colleagues have said about him, is that he's a dedicated and kind individual. He makes sure his student feels included in everything that they do throughout the day. He is definitely an advocate for the student. In fact, there was a situation where this student happens to be fluent in Spanish, and Joe made sure that he got in the right class so that he would benefit from learning in that environment. He goes above and beyond for his students, and that is why his colleagues felt that he was worthy of the Educational Professional of the Year. Thank you, Joe, for all that you do, and you continue.
Thank you, Mrs. Connor. Before moving on, there are three people that I absolutely have to thank publicly. The first of which are responsible for all the beautiful decorations you see around the room, and that's our SAC, our Student Assistance Coordinator here at Alder School, Ms. Liana Dragovitz, and then also my Administrative Assistant, Ms. Victoria Bordenaro. So thank you. To our 12 honorees, they wanted to make sure that you come up and take your stars off the dais here and take them home with you, because they really wanted you to have them. And the other person is, the video montage and the audio that you see up here is Tyler Gardner from our TV station, so thank you so much. So on behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Gruccio, Central Administration, and all the colleagues around the district, we really want to honor you just one more time, the 12 recipients, because you are truly educational leaders. You will take your offices, so to speak, this September, you'll have some great parking spots, by the way. But more importantly, and also a $250 grant that you can use to basically supplement and do enrichment activities with the students that you care so much about. But more importantly, you are truly educational leaders within our schools, and I would ask the principals to remember as you go through staff meetings throughout next year, to make sure that this program is recognized again throughout the year, so that it's not just one night. So again, congratulations to everybody, well done. What do you think, Mighty? Should we take a break for some pictures? Okay, I think we'll take a little break. Salagi, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, and that way, everybody can take pictures. I'm going to ask the Teachers of the Year to come up, and then the ESPs as well, so we can get a group picture. Mighty is always happy to take pictures with the young ones, so if you want to have a picture with Mighty, you can go to the back there and do that, but if you could, the Teachers of the Year, if you could come up front first, please, thank you.
All right, we ready? Mrs. Anaya, the next part of the meeting is yours.
Thank you all very much. So tonight, we have Remington and Vernick, it's our engineer of record you guys have hired to help us with our HVAC concerns and remediation. We have Edward Dennis, partner, I think is your title, at Remington Vernick, and his teammates, Bob and Tim. They're going to be talking about the history, how we got to where we got to with the scope of work, the project at hand, and how we got there, what is going to be remedied, how much it's going to cost, when is it going to get done, all the fun stuff. So just background, I did have some questions from some of the board members before this meeting about some of the purchasing processes. So purchases as a whole, just a quick recap, is following New Jersey State statute with regard to purchasing laws. As a QPA, Qualified Purchasing Agent, I'm able to authorize anything under $44,000 without going to bid. This is extremely over, so we're going to talk about bidding processes and different options that we entertained during this project, so to give you a little bit of information. It is something that they are obviously very passionate about, it's what they do every day. They will be able to share with you all that they've been through for our district, and we just ask that board members hold your questions to the end, just jot them down for us. If they don't address it, we will 100% be able to ask questions afterwards and talk out the purchase for tonight, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shannon, that was an excellent introduction. In fact, I only had two slides, and you covered both of them, so I'm off the hook. My name's Ed Dennis, I'm a principal at Remington and Vernick Engineers, it's nice to be here tonight with all of you. As Shandra said, we're here to present the HVAC project, how we got here, where we are, and where we're going. In the spirit of your awards night, though, I do have to say, with me tonight is Tim Colodey and Bob Smith. Tim Colodey was recently named the 2021 Delaware Valley Young Engineer of the Year. He's a gorgeous recipient, and I'm sure if they had a Delaware Valley Old Engineer of the Year, Bob would have been in the running, but we'll have to wait for next year. So this is us. Shandra really did cover pretty much the agenda of what we're going to cover tonight. There's a lot of information on these slides, I believe all of you have copies of the presentation, so we're not going to read every word on every slide, we're going to kind of cover it at each topic. I think we've kind of covered everything, but if you have any questions, please, at the end of the presentation, we'll be happy to answer your questions.
And you'll have it at the end of the meeting. I uploaded up Word docs, so like I said, you guys, we squirrel a lot, so I want them to have to go through their slides, and then you'll have it in Word docs. All right, thank you.
Very good. So I am going to hand it over to Tim, who's going to cover the technicals.
Great, thank you, Ben. So like you said, I'll start by going through the first step of the process, which was to do an evaluation of the HVAC system throughout the whole district. So again, the goal of this evaluation is to come up with a strategic plan and a five-year implementation plan for a HVAC replacement throughout the district. We started this in June of 2021, and we have completed by September of 2021. So again, this is a list of facilities that were included in the evaluation. Again, it was all schools throughout the district, including all primary schools, middle schools, and the high school, as well as the facilities department buildings. So our approach to this evaluation was pretty straightforward. We basically visited every school. We had professional engineers, licensed mechanical engineers visit every school, walked through and looked at all the equipment. We also looked at existing drawings and interviewed facility maintenance personnel to really understand all the systems at every school.
Tim, if you don't mind, to use the microphone, even though we're a small room here, we livestream, and that's how people at home can hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So before we started our evaluation, we met with the district, sat down, and went through some of the guidelines and goals for the process, so they're up there, I'm not going to go through them all, so you can take a look at those. These are some additional considerations that are very important to us as we're going through this process. The one was the schedule for construction and how are we able to implement all this work in a relatively short amount of period of time, and also, due to the recent COVID pandemic, how we're going to implement some advanced indoor-air quality control technologies with this project. So again, as I said earlier, the draft report was first issued to the district in August of 2021. We then kind of went back and forth, fine-tuned some of the recommendations, and issued the final report in September. And the report, it was a pretty detailed report, there's some of the information that was included is listed up on the screen. So our findings, basically, it looks like the last time the district did a major HVAC renovation project was back in the early 2000s, so that means that all the equipment throughout the district is around 20 years old, and with the type of equipment that was installed, it has a useful life of around 20 years, so it's coming time to replace a lot of that equipment. So we found a lot of it was in good condition, it was well-maintained, but again, it's time to replace, and I wouldn't count on it to, you know, last very much longer. And there's some other notes up there on the screen for some other schools. I think I already covered most of these things up there. Most of the equipment in the district is nearing the end of its useful life, like I said earlier. So based on our findings, we wanted to prioritize all of our recommendations with a top priority, a second tier, and a third tier, the third tier being the least urgent, I think men would have considered replacing five years out, and obviously, the most urgent items we included in Priority Level One, and the criteria for each of those levels is listed up on the screen. So this is taken directly from our report, this is our Priority Level One recommendations, so you can see all the schools and the items that we recommended there, along with estimated construction costs. So like I said, a lot of this stuff is coming due to replace around this time, so there's a lot of work to be done. Again, this is the Priority Level Two recommendation, so this is not as urgent as Priority Level One, and then this is the Priority Level Three, so this work will be about, we recommend about five years out. So once we've completed that evaluation, the next step in the process is to move forward with the design and the preparation of construction documents. So to start that, we met with the district and came up with a scope of work based on our findings. So the scope work for the project was based on the Priority One recommendations. We had to select from those recommendations based on a $13 million construction budget, and we worked with the schedule of starting November 2021, getting substantially complete by February of 2022, and then we just completed the final documents this past March. by February of 2022, and then we just completed the final documents this past March. So, the base scope for the project. The project includes work at four schools. The work at the Swift School, the Slayball School, and Davenport is very similar. We're basically just replacing the chillers at each of those schools, and then the associated pumps, local piping, and things like that. The bulk of the work, though, is at the high school. So, at the high school, we're replacing about 12 rooftop units and the associated VAV boxes, coils, and things in the ductwork. We're also replacing the heating hot water pumps that distribute the hot water throughout the building. And we're also installing a new central front-end control system server in the high school. I don't know if you noticed, but in the guidelines that we had established at the onset of the project, one of those goals was to ultimately create a control system where you can monitor, control all the systems in the district from a central location. And so, this will kind of be the first step towards that goal by implementing that first central control system in the high school. And then, we had additional scope for the $5 million for additional work at the high school to replace the rooftop units and additional VAV boxes. So, these are just some pictures of the equipment. So, these are pictures of the chillers over at Davenport that we're replacing. These are the chillers over at HR Swift. And these are the chillers at Slayball Elementary. And these are the rooftop units at the high school. So, these units are going to be replaced mostly in kind. They're going to have energy recovery, similar to what they have there now, and also UV lighting for additional indoor air quality control. So, the project does include, I'll just look through these slides, they're all very similar. So, the project does include kind of a soup-to-nuts approach. It included all the mechanical work required, as well as the supplemental electrical and structural engineering designs. We also worked on controls and then any other general construction issues, so there's fencing or concrete pads to support the equipment. So, this is our final design summary that we presented to the district, along with our estimates. So, you can see up there, we have equipment at the high school, and then the three chiller projects, along with our estimated engineers estimate and the lead time for the equipment. So, that's kind of been a critical issue with this whole project. We've really been seeing lead times for equipment just kind of explode, probably, you know, more than two or three times of what we typically expect. So, that was kind of a challenge as far as when we could schedule construction. So, if you see on the right-hand side, that was when we anticipated performing the work. So, the work at the high school, depending on what the final lead time will be, we wanted to try and do something in the summer, but it could bleed into, or most likely will bleed into, next summer. And then, the work at the elementary schools with the chiller projects, we'll start that this coming winter at the end of cooling season. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bob to talk about the procurement process.
It looks like there's not as much interest in the HVAC as there was in the presentation of the awards tonight. So, procurement for the project, there was a lot of things we had to take into consideration, and one of the most important things was the schedule. The intent was to try to start work and get as much complete as we could in summer 2022, because that's when the kids are out of school, there's least interruptions, so the contractors have more free rein over the school. So, like Tim said, we're looking at unprecedented lead times for equipment, sometimes double, triple what we've been seeing. So, getting the equipment ordered and getting it in the queue for manufacture is crucial to getting the work done in a timely manner. And we're seeing escalation in the current market prices, and some bids, we're seeing low bid participation, and we're seeing high prices also. So, we looked at three options in order to procure the equipment and the labor for the project. One was the bidding, the labor and the equipment, which is a traditional bid, where you put a set of bid specs out, contractor gives your price on the whole job. The second thing we looked at was bidding the labor and procuring the equipment. One of the things that we found with this option is that a lot of the contractors don't like to bid the labor and have the equipment furnished, because a lot of the contractors get a lot of their profit on the markup of the equipment, so they're averse to using this method of procurement. The third option is procuring the labor and the equipment as one project through the cooperative. The traditional bid schedule, in order to get anything done for summer 2022, was not a viable option, because we couldn't start ordering the equipment until 15 weeks after we first specified the equipment by our office. So, once they went out there and determined what equipment was going to be utilized in the project, in order to get through the process of the design and the bid process, you're looking at about 15 weeks from the time they specified the equipment. So, obviously, that wouldn't have allowed us to do anything with the long lead times for the equipment this summer. The second option is bidding the labor and purchasing the equipment through the co-op. Now, that gets your equipment ordered within approximately six weeks after it's specified. But again, one of the problems we've seen is the contractors don't like to bid the labor and have the equipment furnished, because again, that's where they have their profit. And the option three was the labor and equipment through the co-op. Now, that obviously gets you the same advantage of purchasing the equipment quicker, and it also gets the contractor engaged early on in the process. So, the advantage is to using the co-op for the labor and the equipment. Like we said, one of the biggest problems is the long lead items, which are going to impact your schedule. You lock in the current prices once you purchase the equipment, so you're not subject to additional price increases during the bid process. You also start the procurement process early, because we were able to specify the equipment, get an equipment order placed while we were still working on the final design documents for the project. So, it basically compressed the procurement time necessary to get to the point we are this evening. The other thing is, because we're doing it through a co-op, and they have a contractor that they use for installation of the equipment, it allowed the contractor to get in early to take a look at the plans and kind of, for lack of a better term, value engineering, to give us opinions where they thought changes needed to be made. So, what this does is it hopefully eliminates any future change orders, because the contractor is now at a full look at the project, and we've made revisions of the plans to try to avoid these change orders that sometimes you see run for seeing conditions during construction. Again, it ensures bid participation of qualified contractors, because one of the pitfalls is if we were to purchase the equipment and we were to bid the labor, you're not assured that you're going to get a contractor to bid just the labor. Now, you're left with a warehouse full of equipment and no one to install it. And it also ensures that the project is not over budget. And through the co-op, you get basically audited pricing, so it's fair, and the intent is to try to get the equipment below the wholesale without the contractor markup. So, again, we looked at Option One, which is traditional bid, which precluded any work being done during the summer of 2022, and the concern is you get low participation, a low bid participation and high bid prices. The second option was doing the co-op equipment purchase and bidding the labor, and you have the potential for the labor coming in above your project budget, and, like I said before, the danger of having all the equipment you need but no bidders, and therefore, not able to install the equipment. The option three is doing the co-op for the labor and the equipment. For this particular project and for this environment, that may be your most cost-effective alternative. It accommodates the schedule, allows for the potential of some summer 2022 construction, and for this particular project, that's the course of action that we're recommending. If, for example, the lead times are decreasing, there is the possibility that we could get some of this work done in summer of 2022. So, the process for the equipment, co-op, and labor is basically a two-step process. Ordering the equipment, which is a long lead item, to try to get as much equipment before summer 2022 as possible while we're finalizing the construction documents. And I think at the meeting in early March, you ordered the equipment, you approved the purchase order to order the equipment for the projects. And for the labor component, basically, you get the labor contract once the construction documents are finalized. So, we provided all of the plans for the installation to the cooperative, which includes the electrical, the structural, the details for the installation of the equipment. And the co-op is the Omni Cooperative. It's nationally recognized, it's approved for use in New Jersey, and it's developed using audited pricing from a cooperative, excuse me, a competitive bidding price. And the contractor or the co-op is utilizing Train USA for the project, and they're using three local contractors, AC Mechanical, which is out of Maze Landing, Hughes Electric, which is right here in Epsican, and for ductwork and structural for the support of the equipment, they're using Thomas Company, which is located right here in Eggar Township. So, the PO was already issued to the equipment in the amount of $2,994,113. That's already been issued. We've already approved the submittals, and the equipment is in the process of entering the queue for production. What is on the agenda for the evening for the board's consideration is the award of the labor contract. The labor contract is $6,876,000. So, that puts our total project cost at $9,870,113. The intent would be, if the board approves the contract for the labor portion of the project this evening, the PO would be cut, and it would be issued to the co-op tomorrow. Now, I don't know if you remember one of the earlier slides that Tim had put up, the cost or our estimated engineers estimate was $12,447,000, and then the budget included another $0.5 million for contingency. So, I think the total budget was right around $13 million. So, with the purchase of the equipment through the co-op, and with the labor quote we received from the co-op, we're about 20% under what our engineers estimate was. So, a couple of things to take into consideration with the work schedule. We have, not obviously just Eggar Township, we're working with several other districts, several other municipalities on HVAC projects. And since we've engaged with the co-op, the lead times have actually increased. So, I want to give the board a realistic preview. So, it's unlikely that a lot of work will get done this summer, but if the equipment is produced and manufactured enough time, the co-op is ready to install some of the equipment this summer. The chillers are going to be installed this fall after the cooling season, which will not interrupt or disrupt any of the school operations. So, that'll be, I figure, your cooling season's end around October 15th, then they would come in, demo the chillers, install the new chillers, get them up and running, obviously well in advance of next year's cooling season. The other equipment, the rooftops, as Tim had mentioned in his presentation, would be stored off-site and would be installed in summer 2023. Now, the delivery dates could change. If we get equipment in sooner, more work will get done this summer than we anticipate. But the problem is, is that you can't do some of this work during the school year, because it's too disruptive to the operations. So, that's why we're recommending this work get delayed until next summer. We're also working with the district to look at other funding opportunities, the Clean Energy Program. We've had pretty good success with, you know, other districts, and we obviously are here to assist the district with other funding sources. One of the other things that we had to address is the Office of State Controller. When a contract is awarded that exceeds $2.5 million but is less than $12.5 million, you have to submit a post-award package to the Office of State Controller for their review. When the contract exceeds $12.5 million, you need to submit the entire bid package to OSC in advance of advertising for them to comment on, and you cannot advertise the project until you receive the OSC approval to advertise. We submitted the equipment purchase to OSC. We did not receive any adverse comments on that, and we've been coordinating with OSC since we started down this path of the labor and equipment installation through the co-op. We've been addressing their comments. Obviously, if the board goes forward and awards the contract tonight for the labor component, we'll be submitting a copy of the quote, as well as the district's resolution awarding the contract. And some of the information we got back from OSC early on, they had requested some standard language be included in the front-end documents, which we did. We furnished that to the co-op. And another thing that they suggested as a best practice, but was not required, was to do an advance public notice that the district intends to award a contract to a co-op in advance of the award. That notice was published, I think, on Friday, basically indicating that the district intends to award a contract to the co-op this evening. So, that way, if there were interested parties that wish to speak, they could come here this evening and give their opinions and let their comments be known to the board. Okay? That's basically the conclusion of the procurement process. I'm going to turn it over to Ed for some final remarks, and then, obviously, if the board has any questions, we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Tim. So, that pretty much covers everything. We're happy to answer any questions you might have, comments. I think we covered pretty much.
Before we hear questions from the board, I just want to highlight a few things from the presentation. One, thank you guys very much. It has been a very thorough process, a very long road without a Facilities Director, and you guys have made my job not so terrible. So, I really do appreciate your expertise and this project that we've done together. I want to highlight a few things. One, the fact that our machines, our equipment, our guts of our building, as I call them, as they say, were very well-maintained. That is not without the hard work of our Facilities Department and our maintenance workers. So, I have to just say thank you to them publicly. Priority One, $43 million. Don't know if you saw that, but just wanted to highlight that. We were doing some of it, but $43 million in Priority One, like right now. That's what we've been talking about for the past few years. The controls, having, right now, we have Siemens, we have CM3, having one front-end to be able to control the entire district, so all of our guys can just hop on and help each other out, is going to be a huge lifesaver for us. The equipment, we did, you guys already did approve it in February 22nd, and that was ordered for the lead time conversation. So, again, following recommendations and doing our due diligence to make sure that we did get in line for our equipment. The legal ad, I wanted to highlight, and then you brought it up, was it was done as a preemptive. Usually, it's after the board appoints a solicitor, architect, engineer, any professional service or contract, it's afterwards, but doing the advertisement prior to, to give any opportunity for comment. And I did receive a comment from, I call him the state guru. He is the state governmental professional development person. He does Rutgers conferences for local government finance. He also does it for our CPA, excuse me, QPAs with our association. And he called after seeing the legal ad. He reached out to me yesterday, and I got to touch base with him today. I wanted to just commend the process, the fact that we do have local vendors. Using national co-op is really frowned upon in state purchasing. New Jersey wants to keep it homegrown. And having local vendors, which was a huge important part, I did communicate to our engineers, and they are local, is a local convey, which makes us happy. And he had nothing to say, except he appreciated, I told him the process, why we're doing it tonight, and how we ended up going through the process with Office of State Controller, and he was very happy to hear that. The last comment was funding. One of the last slides talked about the SBB grant. That is what we've been talking about for a while now, the $5 million I put in for New Jersey Clean to fund 75% of this project. The project came in way under. We submitted a $13 million project to the state, but the cap was $5 million anyway, so we're hoping to hear. I had reached out to the state last week, and they said they're in the project management phase. Once that's cleared, we can then go ahead and get the, go ahead to start procuring and charge it off, which would allow more money in our local budget to keep these projects going. So, that's my little notes. I wanted to recap, but very good presentation. You hit everything that I tried to anticipate, but we will go ahead and, I guess, Mrs. Solagi, take your lead on who you want to ask questions first.
Okay. Mrs. Sullivan?
Question? Question? Oh, okay. Do you want to go first? Go ahead.
I want to commend you for your presentation, and also, Shonner, for your hard work. I think one thing that opened my eyes tonight is the foresight that you had of where we would be at this time, really, on the calendar. Everybody knows that supplies are very hard to get. Labor is even harder at this point, but to bring the labor to our own township residents and people in this area is really commendable. So, I fully support this. I really believe you went about it the right way. We put in all the orders so that we are in a queue line, people that are, you know, thinking about it and researching it, which you have done, but we're, I think, a little bit ahead of the curve, because things are going to be less available, and with the labor force just starting to come back, or maybe shutting down again. So, I want to commend all of you for what you presented tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you. Very good presentation, very well thought out. I just have a couple of questions. As far as the labor, what was the total on As far as the labor, what was the total on the labor again?
The total on the labor, I think, was, that was the total contract. The total on the labor, there you go, $6,876.
Are there any guarantees with this labor that it will be performed properly? And is there a performance bond put in place to ensure that everything comes together as promised?
Yes. So what we did was even though we went with the co-op contract, we essentially included what we would normally include in our normal bid package with their contract. So we put together, they have their normal co-op contract documents that they sent us, but then we then put together a contract document that includes their documents and also includes all of our normal bid documents, which would include bonding. It would also include how payments are going to be paid, and it would include documentation for qualifications of the contractors and their subcontractors. So all the typical documentation that we would require for electrical subcontractors, mechanical, structural, all of that was included, and the co-op was required to throw all that out to give us the assurances that the contractors that we're getting on this job are qualified to do the work, that there's a guarantee that the work's going to get done. And on top of that, the local contractors that we have on this project, we have experience with and we know that they're qualified and they can do the work. But to your direct question, yes, there will be bonding on the project to ensure that we're covered.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mrs. Hyman?
I was just wondering about the permits, procurement, and the cost and the engineer drawing, where does that fit in in that amount?
So the cost of permitting typically is waived for a school project. The soft cost for engineering, I don't know, was that included in there? These are just the hard costs. Our engineering costs were part, were awarded previously as part of a separate PO. So these are just the hard costs that are being considered tonight for the cooperative.
So the drawings and everything has already been done?
Yes. Yep. That's all complete.
So that was board-approved, October 19th, board meeting for the engineer fees related to this project for $612,000. That was done prior to the specs being done. That was their separate cost.
Mrs. Bonjorino?
Again, thank you so much for your presentation. I just had a quick question around the, I believe in one of the presentations last year, you had spoken about the high school having solar panels on the roof. I was wondering if there's any kind of concern or impact to the work that needs to work around solar panels?
Yeah, so the only thing that's going to affect this project is fitting the units. A lot of the units on the roof are close to the solar panels. So when we were laying out the new units, we made sure that it wouldn't interfere with the existing solar panels anyway, whether it was going to be a shadow or physically, you know, in the way. So we did look at that, but other than that, there's no other issues.
Okay. So they don't have to be removed or an additional source to come in?
No.
They're already. That's okay. They are already rooftop units there. They're replacing what was already there, so it's not like they're taking the panels away to make space for it. They're actually rooftop units they're replacing.
Really quick question on the, you said that the work will be done maybe next summer for the high school. If we're unable to get the work completed by then, is there any plans for how that would interrupt school time?
If we weren't able to get the work done next summer?
Yes, for the high school.
So the path that we're on is, is if we have to defer the work to next summer, we're going to be way, way ahead of the game because we'll have all the equipment manufactured, stored. So literally, the day after school ends, the contractor's just going to hit the ground, and we don't have any real concern that they're going to be. The challenge to these projects is getting the equipment. Once you have the equipment, the project's very straightforward. We'll have our contractor in place, all of our equipment will be on hand, and they'll just hit, you know, you'll be first in line for summer 2023. So that really isn't a concern. You're welcome.
Anybody else?
So do you foresee any problems?
Mrs. Hyman, if you can use your microphone. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you foresee any problems with getting the equipment that we need?
It's not a matter, so we'll get the equipment we need, it's a matter of timing. So right now, the way that the lead times are trending, it's unlikely we'll get equipment to be installed this summer because the lead times are heading in the wrong direction. They're increasing, they're not decreasing. So if that trend continues, what will happen is all the equipment will be manufactured and stored, and then when we're ready to do the work in the summer of 2023, it'll be delivered to the site when they're ready to do the installation. Yes.
I just want to say thank you for breaking it down in layman terms for individuals such as myself with the HVAC.
You got it. Those are the letters.
All the terminology and all the, you know, integral parts and just breaking down where the money's going and the, I guess for me, the big thing, like you said, it's the duration of the project, but I know you can't do this type of work when school's in session, so it's a unique situation, but thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. And we are, you used the right word. This is, it's a unique, unprecedented market that we're in right now. What happened was you had COVID, which triggered this rush and this demand for HVAC, and then you had all of this funding that poured gasoline on the fire, and that's why you have this unprecedented spike in demand for HVAC work. And that's where we're at.
Anybody else? No? I do. With all this sophisticated front-end controls, will our facilities get training on them? And will they, somebody be assigned to it or can everybody touch it? Because that's what concerns me, is we get sophisticated stuff and it can get pretty messy when the wrong people touch it.
It's a very good question because you're absolutely right. These are complex systems. These aren't like your thermostats that you have at home, and training is required. Typically, when we do new control systems, there's training included as part of the installation. Tim could speak on this more than I can, but the answer to the question is yes, so that training will be provided and will defer to administration on who would participate in that training.
So the facilities department, leadership and maintenance workers, it would not be custodians or principals, it would be who does it now. So the difference is right now, we have CM3 experts and Siemens experts, and they may know the basics of how to turn them on and off, but they won't be able to program or change things. So having one system that everybody can get trained on and anybody can go to any building and help out is going to be a huge help, so.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Go ahead.
It just made me, when you mentioned about who's going to, and you mentioned who's going to control or operate the sophisticated system. So in mind, I'm just picturing a school, when I'm picturing a classroom, will there be a thermometer, not thermometer, thermostat in every classroom that, you know, and usually is operated where they set it, you know, like they set all the classrooms at 68 or 70, and the teachers can't touch it unless it's a few degrees up or down, and it can be shut off from a central location somewhere? Is that what we're talking about?
There will be local controls. So yeah, you will have a little bit of adjustment in each classroom, but then there will be monitoring at a central computer.
Got it. Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
And it's Gilbert Floyd, we have that now, where it's, I think, a two degrees, three degrees difference, but it is centrally controlled now. It's just making it, so it's not going to be, sophistication is really just going to be having a universal system district-wide, not that they don't have the systems now to program. Like when we have issues here and I make my text and then the air changes, he's at home making it happen. So we have it now, it's just going to be something streamlined where we have the same system.
We're going to open to the public, so the public can ask any questions of our engineers here. Anybody? Okay. Well, I didn't know if they had a question. Okay. So now we're moving on to the Finance and Operations Committee report.
Thank you so much for your time.
Mrs. Santill, your assistants, please, for the screen. Thank you so much. And I have since uploaded that presentation to board docs and public, so you can see it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, board of directors.
Thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met on April the 5th at 6:10, actually. In attendance were Mrs. Tamika Gilbert Floyd virtually, Mrs. Solagi, Mr. Ireland, myself. The administration was Ms. Anaya and Dr. Gerchio, and we had two presenters there, Caroline Jackson and Sean Yates from Honeywell. The committee welcomed Caroline and Sean to our meeting and allowed them to present information regarding an energy savings improvement plan. The committee is recommending that the board approve the project development agreement to move forward with creating an investment-grade audit of improvements. This will have a full report to the board of what projects can be done within the district and can be funded by energy savings. The Transportation Department is already at work on routes for next year and will be going out to bid as needed for non-public charter schools and ACIT. Special education runs are being developed after IEPs are finalized and parent contracts are considered. The department is doing their best to provide as many special ed runs as possible. Mr. Beck with Food Service will be presenting to our board this spring on any updates for his department. Ms. Anaya updated the committee on policy committee's work to clarify policy 6421 with a new draft, and it will be presented at the next meeting, or are we going to do that tonight? Next meeting. This is the time for a lot of bids to go out, bids for spring and for RFPs, and there's a whole list of those if you go into our, if you go into the meeting minutes. Action items tonight with the committee, I'm sorry, for tonight, April 12th, award the HVAC contract and submission of the APR homeless children and youth grant to the NJ DOE. Other items that were discussed were budget hearings and monthly finance items. And that is the end of my report. Our next meeting will be on, let's see, May 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. If I could just add a little information about the Energy Savings Improvement Plan, it will be on the agenda for next meeting. So essentially, we've worked with Honeywell, not specifically for Honeywell Products, but that's just the vendor we're using to go ahead and do a, we've had a local energy audit, which basically does a very surface-level audit. We got that done, I think, in 2018 on what improvements we can do to save energy. This is a finer-tooth comb that goes around and looks at, you know, windows. It looks at more than just lighting. They're going to do a very, they had presentations with them of other schools that the books are this big. It identifies everything that can be done to save money, and they basically present that, the board will get a copy of that, and then we would then cherry pick to say, if we change lighting, we save $300,000. Ooh, we can buy two more chillers with that money, and it kind of funds itself. There's no increase to taxpayers or anything. But to get that done, we have to have this agreement with them that says they're going to do this work, very thorough work throughout our entire district, and if we decide to not do a thing, if we say, thank you so much for all of your hard work, we're going to continue to just fund everything like we have. There is a fee associated, and they charged us, it's five cents a square foot. The district has 1.3 million square feet. It was after some BA work, I'll just call it, because that's not what they usually charge. It should have been closer to half million dollars. But they said they would go down to 10 cents a square foot, and before the end of the conversation, we were down to 5 cents, so 65,000 if we choose to have them do all that work and not move forward with any savings plan. I do know we've looked at solar and lighting as a district, so I do believe if nothing else, if the rest of it's too complicated, maybe it's just that simple, and there will be no fee charged or no fee associated. But you're going to see that on the next agenda, and I wanted to just give some more backgrounds as to what you're actually looking at.
I have one more thing to say about that. I was very impressed with the presentation and the way they talked about through savings, we can actually fund a lot of projects, so we won't be asking the, you know, our constituents for any more money. I was very impressed. I really liked the presentation, and I do believe, aren't they coming to, are they going to present to the full board?
They will present to the full board after they do this process. I thought, talking to now, we talked to committee at this point of just the process, I just highlighted what they said. I can share the presentation with everybody, but I think them doing their work and then presenting what they found will be a more, better use of that time, because I know you guys love presentations, so. Okay? So that's that piece. Anything else?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the report? No? Okay. I need a motion and a, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I have a quick question on the 5.3, the application for the ARP. I just saw that there was, where was it again? Sorry. The transportation, the 60,000, what's that for? If we can get clarification on that.
Sure. So this section of the American Recovery Plan ARP is a different allocation than anything else we've ever talked about. It's new money, it's about $64,000, and it's specific for homeless children and youth. So they gave us this grant and said, how can we help provide services or goods or whatever to these students? We also have money in Title I set aside specific for homeless children and youth, so we thought there's more flexibility with this, where we can actually charge our transportation costs for transient students, as well as what they called temporary housing, and the restrictions are very, very limited on what that means. If, basically if somebody's displaced and they need somewhere to be for just a couple days while they figure it out, we can actually pay for hotel rooms. We can help them out. We can't pay for a lease, we can't pay for them to, you know, the parameters are very strict. Maybe if there's an abusive situation and the people need to leave right away, we can put them up for a couple of days. So that's how we allocated this grant to be spent. So the transportation costs are going to offset hundreds of thousands of dollars that Jamie has to track of transportation costs for transient students to help offset our local budget. It was an anticipated cost. When students come and go, it's nothing you can really plan for, so the transportation costs are really astronomical. So it's just to help offset it a little bit.
Okay. All right. I need a motion and a second on 5.2 to 5.4.
No made?
Thank you.
Okay, I need discussion?
I need that again. Was that Mrs. Sullivan motion and who was the second? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. Thank you very much. There was a lot of voices in there. All of us, everybody.
Any discussion?
No.
No? Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Bonjorino?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Miss Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, there you go.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Okay. Curriculum. Mr. Price, you have a report for us?
Okay, thank you. The curriculum report, we met on April 5th at 7:00 PM. The meeting was about an hour and 15 minutes, and we met here at the Alder Avenue School. Administrator attending was Lily Moss. In attendance was Ms. Bonjorino, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Solagi, and of course, myself, Mr. Price. We discussed quite a few things. Agenda items discussed were professional development, field trips, and the CTE Perkins curriculum, curricular update for culinary courses. Informational topics shared and discussed were around elementary data and the progress students have made from October till March and the grants that will be submitted for board approval in the near future. Discussion was also had around curriculum, text, and the processes the district uses for curriculum writing and text selections. We had a very lengthy discussion on that. Conclusions reached. The committee would like to keep informed and review more in-depth process for the text and supplemental book selections. The committee will be kept informed on data and student progress from now until the end of the year, including grade level and district-wide data at the next meeting. Ongoing issues still under consideration, there are none at this time, but the committee will continue to review curricular initiatives throughout the development and completion of the budget. Recommendations, board members had suggested on adding more certifications and real-world opportunities for our students, particularly at the high school level. As an example, would be lifeguard training, EMT, law enforcement-type activities, so. The date, time, and place of the next meeting is May 10th, 7:00 PM at Slave Ball Primary. Possible topics to be discussed, textbook and supplemental resources list for approval, standard changes and implementation plans for the 2022, 2023 school year. So this concludes my report. I don't know if Ms. Moss has anything to add or if there's any questions. Anybody need any clarification?
Yes. Go ahead.
I was going to ask, are we having committee reports, I mean, committee meetings?
Well, I was going to ask, are we having committee reports, I mean, committee meetings different nights?
Are we?
Is it, are all of them on May 10th?
That's what the calendar says.
Okay.
That's what it says? Okay.
All right, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
That's one, when you mentioned book selection, did you, textbooks or you mean purchasing books for libraries, for student, student resources, for students to read or is it more? What kind of?
Ms. Moss, do you want to explain that a little bit better? What we, I know we covered a lot of conversation and I know we requested some information, so maybe you could elaborate that a little bit better? Thank you.
So every year, there's the, the list that gets submitted for board approval where we talk about our textbooks and supplemental texts. So there was just discussion around how, what that process is like and how we select books. So just walking the committee through that process as we look at that list. So it's that time of year where we do that.
Okay, if there's nothing further, that, that'll conclude my report. Ms. Anaya, did you have something?
To clarify, committee meetings, Finance and Operations may have a virtual meeting before the budget hearing next week. If that's what your, I wasn't sure where you were going with that, but that's what I realized, our report says next meeting may be virtual. Possibly, we don't know if we're going to hold on, I'll talk to Mrs. Sullivan before then to see if we need to have a quick virtual meeting before. Because this meeting covered the Honeywell and other topics, not necessarily for the agenda, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for curriculum? Okay. Mr. Ireland, committee report for the Policy Committee.
I would give a motion or a second on that one. Did we approve it?
There's no action for this committee report?
I just wanted to beat somebody, sorry. All right, I'm going to give the committee report for Policy Committee. It was held on April 5th. It lasts about an hour long. Board members attending was myself, Patrick Ireland, Mr. Seppi, Ms. Hyman and Mrs. Zalagi. Also attending was Mr. Santilli, Mrs. Elk, Elko and Mrs. Anaya. Ms. Anaya. Subjects discussed were Policy 8613 waiver of transportation, student transportation, Policy 2270 religion in schools, Policy 8810 religious holidays, Bylaw 0110 identification, Bylaw 0131 bylaw and policy, Bylaw 0132 executive authority, Bylaw 0144 board member orientation, Policy 5541 anti-hazing, Policy 8465 biased crimes and bias-related acts, Policy 8540 school nutrition programs, Policy 8550 meal changes and outstanding bill service, food service bill, Policy 6421 budgeted, purchases budgeted and purchase, and Policy 6422 budget transfers, Policy 2460 special education. The conclusions reached for that were Policy 8613 waiver of student transportation was reviewed as a second reading, Policy 2270 religion in schools, and Policy 8810 religious holidays were revisited by the committee. Religion in schools, Policy 2270 is being recommended for revision to reflect mandated changes due to the United States Department of Educational Updates on constitutional religious expression in public elementary and secondary schools. Due to the revisions, Policy 8810 is being recommended for abolishment as the legal requirements from Policy 8810 are now included in the Policy 2270 revisions. Bylaw 0110 identification, Bylaw 0131 bylaws policy, bylaws and policy, Bylaw 0132 executive authority, Bylaw 0144 board member orientation were reviewed by the committee with minor updates being proposed for approval to update outdated language and information. Policy 5541 anti-hazing is a new mandated policy requiring two readings. The policy is mandated due to the new law requiring public and non-public schools and middle schools to adopt anti-hazing policies. Policy 8465 biased crimes and bias-related acts is a new mandated policy requiring two readings, which has been replaced to align with NJSA 6A16-6.3 and the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials. Policy 8540 school nutritional programs is a mandated policy revision to reflect the new school, the new statute, NJSA 18A33-11.1, which is breakfast after the bell program. Policy 8550 meal charges slash outstanding food service bill is also mandatory policy revision under NJSA 18A33-21, which was recently amended to make sure boards develop and implement a meal charge program pursuant to NJDOE guidance. Policy 6421 purchases budgeted and Policy 6422 budget transfers were reviewed at the request of the committee. No changes are recommended for Policy 6422, however, there may be recommended revisions of related to Policy 6421. Purchases budgeted are being presented to committee for review and possible approval for the next meeting. Policy 2460 special education is being discussed to address possible minor changes related to the parent and guardian requests and will be presented to the committee for review and possible approval at the next meeting. That concludes my report. Mr. Santilli, did I miss anything in there?
No, thank you very much.
And I just wanted to say thank you to my committee members. We did a lot, as you can tell from our committee, and we did it all as a team and we knocked it out of the park. Thank you, guys.
I just have a question. It's time. I would just like to clarify the, on conclusions reached, item number two, 2270, 8810, Policy 8810, religion in schools and religious holidays. So 8810, 8810 is now included in 2270, so it's not necessary to keep 8810 any longer. So it's essentially now covered under 2270 revisions, is that right?
You are 100% correct.
Is that right?
100% correct, yep.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to open to the public on any topic. Anybody have anything they want to say? No? Yes? Okay. All right, I'm going to ask that the Negotiations Committee meet for like 10 minutes and Executive? After the conclusion of the meeting. Okay? All right, I guess it's time for adjourn. Unless, do you have something you want to say? Ava?
Well, I would just like, before we adjourn, I would just like to say Sister Act was quite a performance. I was able to attend Saturday night and I really enjoyed it and some of the board members attended and I just can't comment enough of how much fun it was and we're looking forward to the next performance. I saw Dr. Grusia was there, so maybe, I'm sure she'll maybe cover a little bit of that as well in her comments, so I just wanted to add that. I thought it was important to mention. Thank you.
You're right. Thank you for reminding me because it was, we were there Friday night, it was good. Okay, anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay.
I know all the, you know, everyone that was here is gone, but hopefully they watched this and they can hear this, but I just, all the teachers and all the, yeah, I'll make sure I'm saying it correct, educational specialists, always make sure I'm saying it correctly, but educational specialists who were honored tonight, they all deserved and it was a night, a great evening, but I just had to say that several of the honorees, I've had personal experiences with them and can say that they just, they do an amazing job. Mr. Alton from Alder, I had the opportunity to work with him and he, everything that he says that he does, he does it. He loves children and he loves science, you know, so we call him Mr. Science. And Ms. Chisco, I had to honor, she was my son's teacher in fourth grade and he loved her and she was a great asset to our family. He really enjoyed his time in fourth grade. And Mr. Spence, I just met Mr. Spence this year and he's my daughter's school counselor. And I've met with a lot of, you know, I've met with school counselors before, worked with school counselors and I can say that I was thoroughly, thoroughly impressed with his presentation to students and it was, he's a great asset to, to Alder Avenue Middle School. So I just wanted to say that out loud, that those are the three people that I definitely, you know, had interactions with and just wanted to thank them personally for all they do for all children and especially with, you know, what they've done for my own children, so that's it.
You're right, it was a special night with special people. Okay. All right, I need a motion?
Motion.
Mrs. Zalagi, before you adjourn, you have to recess to Executive.
There is no executive session.
No? It's just going to be committee? Okay, I'm making sure we work good, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Ireland, I heard you. Second?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?